You still have to make a responsible decision at the end of the day.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought it was, it was great. I really appreciated all the staff work that you and others did to help us.
It's been a definite group effort during all of this, for sure. There's not just one single entity that's really responsible for it. We've had a very good group of people working on all of this, even, you know, outside of the EOC staff, just the, the normal staff and the way that they've come through. It's been very refreshing to, you know, it's one thing to believe that you have a good team. It's another thing to actually see it in action, so.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I think these last few months, we've, we've learned a lot about the value of that teamwork and it's, I've been very impressed.
I think we've learned a lot about each other, too, and what our abilities are and what our strengths and our weaknesses are, and it will definitely aid us in the future.
Yep. Well, it's 9:01. I was just looking at my toolbar. I think maybe we have everybody on today, but could you help me review that? Bessie Jo, do you think we've got all council members?
I only see you and Tom.
Okay.
So we cannot convene until we have at least three. Oh, there's Mike.
So Mike has just joined us. Yeah.
Hello, this is Melanie.
Hi, Melanie.
Hi. Sorry, my internet's not working, so I had to call in.
Okay.
So we're just waiting for Colby.
Alrighty, let's wait a couple of minutes and then we'll get started.
Well, he lives near me. Maybe his internet's not working either.
Oh, good point, Melanie. Yeah, it could be a... Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I have Frontier and also Cable One, Sparklight, and both of them are working for me this morning.
Good.
We might have to send Chris over to do an onsite repair job.
You can't afford me.
Well, I also do live in a metal box, so that's a problem.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's, let's do roll call and get started, and then if we could ask, ask someone to give Colby a call and see if maybe he could join by phone.
Okay. Mayor Giles?
Here.
Councilmember Holmes?
Here.
Councilmember Machazek?
Crescent.
Councilmember Sowers?
Right here.
Councilmember Nielsen? Okay, Councilmember Nielsen is absent.
No, I just got on here.
Oh.
Hi, Colby.
Technological difficulties this morning here. My computer's not wanting to, to sign into the email. So, found an iPad that works.
Oh, good. We were, we were just gonna finish roll call and then give you a call on your phone, but thanks for joining us. I think we're ready to get started on our budget kickoff. And those of us that have access to a screen, we have the agenda on the screen and we had that sent to us earlier. I believe Linda is going to lead us through these discussions and we're looking at roughly a two-hour meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Linda.
Okay, so we're here today to kick off budget development for fiscal '21. And also here from Kami Hedges, the Lot Commission Chair, on, and hear, hear what their recommendations are for funding for the next year's LOT. We'll also have a discussion on three of the major decision points surrounding the budget that you all have to make. So the, the decision points, the major ones are personnel, property taxes, LOT, and then the CIP. Staff is currently still developing a CIP for your consideration, and you will see that at your next meeting. So, so that is coming, and with that, I think that's, that's what we're here to do today. So next on the agenda is public comment. So, Bessie Jo, do you wanna do what you do to see if there's any public on here who would like to make a comment?
Sure. We did not receive any written comment, so if anybody that has called in would like to make a comment now is your opportunity.
Well, I don't see anybody. Do we need to give a little more time, Bessie Jo?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Well, then, do you wanna introduce Kami a little bit more and, and talk about your, the process that you guys had for your LOT Commission meetings this year? Or is that something Kami will do? So I'll just turn it over to you and Kami for the LOT discussion and let you begin.
All right, great. Thank you. Yeah, I have both Kami and Amanda, so I'll turn it on over to Kami at this time. And I will share the funding summary. All right, Kami, it's all yours.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Do you hear me okay?
Yes. Good morning, Kami.
Good morning. So, this year we had a great meeting and we did come back with a revised budget amount from what we had initially thought back in March, and it was 750, I think, at that point. And then it was presented to us to agree upon a $650, or a thousand, lot budget for the fiscal year '21, recommended funding. And so you'll see here in front of you on the screen that we, we funded a lot of the, fully funded most of the items that were requested. We did have five, five applications that were not funded, and then we had five, four that we put into contingency, and then some additional ones that we didn't fully fund. So what I would like to present first is the not recommended for any funding. That's at the bottom of the, the screen, and kind of the reasoning we came about with those applications. First, '21-40, the City of McCall Parks and Rec Master Plan. We chose not to fund that at all when Kurt Wolf presented his three applications. He said that was one of the least priority. He would rather see more funding going into the winter sidewalk and snow removal, which the Commission recommended to fully fund that request. And so that's why we did not fund the master plan. The Little League of West Central Idaho had three applications, and we did fully fund the, or recommend fully funding the pitcher's mound, and with no funding of the frame and for the batting cages as well as the pitching screens. During the presentation, she said no matter what, the Little League would be purchasing the pitching screens, whether we funded it or not. And then next, we had the Valley County Recreation Department portable toilets. We chose not to fund that, and, but we did fund one of their other applications. And then '21-07 on Toby's Place, the mentoring program for disabled youth. That was a very, we had a, a long discussion on, on that particular application, and one of the things that the, the Lot Commission decided was their application actually, we felt that their application didn't fall within a public purpose, and that we appreciated their, their application and what they want to do, but it, we just didn't feel it fell into the actual criteria of the public purpose. So we did not fund any of that application. So then, so that was our, our, our few that we didn't fund at all. Some of the ones that we did partially fund, if you go to the priority number seven, the McCall Youth Hockey Practice Ice Time, they requested $20,000, and last year we funded $8,000. I think their application was only $10,000 last year, and we felt that $8,000 was sufficient enough for, for ice time for the McCall Youth Hockey. On number eight, I guess, do you have any questions so far?
Council, any, any questions?
Not here.
Don't run for me.
All right, so I'll continue on. So number eight, '21-19, Manchester Ice Center Learned Escape Program. Last year, they asked for $10,250, and we felt that we would recommend to fund the $10,250 instead of the full $12,000 that they requested. And then item 12, '21-23, the McCall Fire Protection District, the Emergency Response UTV. This application was, was discussed and felt that it was a, a needed item in our community, and that we would fund, we would recommend funding it for, of $20,000, and then contingency of a $10,000 if, if we were able to get, you know, over the 650 budget number. Number 22, of the McCall City Parks and Rec Equipment Leases. So when Kurt Wolf presented his application, this full amount, the $31,929, was the lease for three items, equip, pieces of equipment. He said two of those pieces of equipment would be funded in the snow removal if that was awarded. And so we removed those two items and we funded it at $95,9230, which is the equipment that wouldn't have been funded in the snow removal project. Number 31 was the McCall Ultra Flood Dog Challenge, tent lights and cost for best umbrella mushers and volunteers. Last year, when they requested money, they requested it for gifts and prizes, and this year it was more for equipment and, and help with the, the race, which we felt that they, they responded from our recommendations last year of to change their application. We can't give money, but possibly we could help fund some projects, and that's why we requested to fund $4,000 of their, their request. Number 26 was the Payette Land Trust, Payette River Basin Initiative. They requested $10,000, and we felt that $5,000 would be a sufficient recommendation for that project. Number 32, Treasure Valley Transit, the Grant Match for Operation Costs. They requested $89,000, which included a new route, funding for a new route, and we felt that $40,000 we would recommend for funding, and then put the additional $49,000 into contingency. Number 34 was the Payette Land Trust, Land Acquisition for River Accessibility. They were asking for $50,000 to purchase land out so that there would be some public access to the Payette River for people to get in and out along the river before you hit Smiley Lane, which is the only public, other public access point. We felt that $25,000 would be sufficient to start, and then in the contingency, another $25,000. And then 21, or number 35 was the McCall Public Library, New Building Construction. They requested $271,000, and we committed to a $50,000 recommendation with the balance in the contingency amount. So that is the applications that we received and how we prioritized them. We did fully feel that the snow removal and the McCall community developed should be on top and funded first, and then as it is presented in front of you.
Thank you, Kami. That was really a good, good overview and a good way to explain stuff to us. Appreciate you taking us through all of that. Council, what's your thoughts, and perhaps you have some questions for Kami?
Hey, Mayor Giles, this is Tom. I was, I didn't get this email, or maybe I did and I just can't find it. I'm just having a hard time seeing it because it's kind of small on the screen.
Can we make that larger on the screen? I'm, I'm gonna ask Bessie Jo and Linda to see if we can do that.
It says, "Large as I can make it." I think it just depends on how big their screen is.
Can, can you email this to me real quick?
Certainly.
Is that possible? That'd be super.
Mayor Giles, this is Annette. While they're emailing that out, since this is Counselor Machazek's first budget go-around on the council, perhaps Kami or Bessie Jo could give a quick overview of the categories in the ordinance that the applications are supposed to fall within, so that he has a little bit of an idea of the types of things that the voters approved the Lot Commission to spend money on.
That's a great idea. I think we'd all benefit from a little review on that in addition to Mike, so let's do that.
I, I, this is Kami, and I don't have that information with me at work, so maybe Bessie Jo can help me with that.
Certainly. Just give me one second and I'll pull it up.
Bessie Jo, do you want me to jump in so you can keep emailing Tom, or did you take care of that?
I took care of Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it. I can, I can see it good now. Thank you.
You know, one thing that is new here with all this, the digital meeting, is not having our six-inch-thick binder for this, the beginning of this budget process.
Right.
Uh, we did put out, if anybody wanted a printed binder, if you want one, please let us know. The packet is online with all of the applications.
Yeah, I got it. I wasn't, I was just saying that this is, it's just kind of a different, different than what we've normally been used to with meeting in person, and yeah, it was not a comment I wish I had. My binder, I'm pretty content with less clutter and technology right now.
Yeah, that's the way I took it, your comment. Colby, this is Bob. I, I, I used to be entirely a paper person. I'm very archaic at technology, and the last three months I've been learning a lot. It seems like we've been, you know, what's really nice is we've been offered the choice of, do you want the paper or not? And we're all, I think all of us are getting better at tracking this stuff digitally. It's working pretty well all in all.
All right, so can you guys see the purposes for the? Did your screen change, or do you still have the LOT stuff?
We still have the LOT summary.
Joe, I do have a question. This is Melanie.
Yeah, go ahead, Melanie.
So, I did request a binder for the lot paperwork, and so I have all of that in front of me. The one, the one thing that I'm really questioning here is the funding for Treasure Valley Transit. They've been asking for another route, but that, that ask is based on something that we've asked from them. So, I, I feel conflicted there.
Okay, so this is Kami, again, and on that, I think that, that they, they requested, I think, $14,000 for the new route, which would run from Memorial Day to Labor Day, from Super 8 all the way to Brundage Inn, and just back and forth, all along Lake Street and Third Street. And there wasn't a lot of discussion on, on that part, because the Commission felt that at this particular moment in time today, it may not be good to start a new route, but they did want to fund the, you know, fund some of the, the grant match that is required to continue the, the, the normal route. Last year, I believe the funding was 59,000 total, instead of 40. So that, that was the reasoning behind the Commission's reduction in the the grant, you know, the, the recommendation to the council.
I totally agree with the fact that right now, in this time, that looks a little, like, too much, but, but we literally asked them to do that, so. So, again, I, I feel like we maybe need to, to pad that a little bit more. If, if we're gonna expect them to add routes and to accommodate us later into the night, which we asked, then, then this looks a little light to me.
Um, sure. So this is the, the first go-around with this, so you're gonna receive the information today, and of course, continue on having some discussion about it, but you won't have to make a decision on these funding sources, or this funding matrix, I think, until our next budget meeting, and so gives everybody enough time to kind of digest everything, but of course, continue with questions on why the Commission chose to recommend the funding they did, so.
Thanks for that.
I, I just wanted to make that, that one comment. Thank you.
No, that was, that was great, Melanie, because we've been very passionate as a council, all of us, asking those hard questions and asking Treasure Valley Transit to step it up, and so when they respond to that, and then, you know, we have, we have a recommendation in front of us. Well, that's something we'll probably need to do some real thinking about, and I like Bessie Jo's idea that when we come back together to focus on this in early June, we should have a really good discussion, you know, 10 to 15 minutes, just on, on the Treasure Valley Transit and think about that. What is the message we're sending, and what do we want to do with that? So I appreciate you bringing that up and reminding us, Melanie. So, Bessie Jo, would, would you address the, we've got section six up on the screen and go over the purposes of LOT?
Uh, yes, certainly. So this is the ordinance that was adopted and then went to the voters, and section, section six covers the purposes for use of revenues derived from the taxes. And so if you look on your matrix, you know that the, the amount for direct cost to collect and enforce the tax comes right off the top, and then, and then the Commission applies whether or not to each of their, of these applications fall into one of these categories. So we have A, Streets, Sidewalks, Pathways, Public Transit, Pedestrian Crosswalks, and Public Transportation. And then we have Construction and Maintenance of Cultural and Recreational Facilities, Services for Community Recreational and Cultural Activities, Public Parks Maintenance, Development, and Beautification, Shelter or Spay and/or Neuter of Stray Animals Found in the City, Local Housing Program as Recommended in the McCall Housing Strategy, Services for McCall Marketing, Advertising, Tourism Development, and Event Promotion, and to mitigate the effects of tourism on the city that the General Fund cannot accommodate. So those are the, the categories that people can apply under, and then the Commission has a list of criteria that they look at, and they score each application to help them with their process of ensuring that the application falls into one of these categories while following a public purpose. And so that's the process used.
Thanks for that overview. It's always, always good to review that. So Mike, do you have any, any specific questions on, on the process or what Bessie Jo presented? Are you tracking that pretty well?
Yep, tracking it just fine.
Thank you. Any, any thoughts from the rest of the council on, on A through H, or our overall process? Okay. Well, let's see. Tom, you were able to get a, a good emailed version.
Yes.
Did that, did that help, and do you, have you got any other thoughts or questions or comments you'd like to make as a result of being able to see all of that information?
No, I, I think, I think it looks all right. I, you know, I'm always, I'm always curious about the skating rink, you know, just, just because they get a, a lot of funding and, and I just have to do a little more research on it. The, the other thing I might be kind of curious about is the vehicle, the ATV, UTV for the Fire Protection District, because I thought they had, somebody else had a UTV that they purchased recently. I just couldn't remember who it was.
Kami, could you respond to that? Do you, do you know a little bit more about that?
I believe the UTV that was assisted in, in a lot recommendation was for the Valley County Search and Rescue. Or if it wasn't actually UTV, it was parts for the, a UTV. But this is the first application, I believe, that we've ever received from the McCall Fire Protection District in the, the years that I've been on the Commission.
That was correct. It is their very first application.
Thank you. Well, I think we've. Unless anyone else on council has more comments, I think we got a really good starting point and a really good briefing. Kami, I want to compliment you and Amanda and Bessie Jo for bringing us a really good draft. I think we have a good understanding of the logic that went behind it, and these are always tough assignments, so we're gonna, we're gonna study this some more and be able to make a decision in June and stay on schedule with our budget process. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members.
Thanks, Kami.
Thank you.
So Linda, I'll turn it back to you. I think we're on to item four, budget priority discussion.
Yes, and I intended to open it up to Annette to make some comments in the the very first part of the meeting, and I just quickly on to the LOT part. So Ned, do you want to? Do you have some things to say before we start the council priority discussion?
Thanks, Linda. Well, I just wanted to start off by saying this will be a great process for everybody this year. I think the staff has done a ton of work to get ready for this budget season. We may face a few challenges and more opportunities for council to have to make some decisions about the budget this year, given the economy. We are still, and Linda will get into this, monitoring the revenue side of the equation to see what the immediate term impacts may be for us, as well as thinking about those revenues like property taxes that will have a lag in terms of impact. And so today, we're really interested in going over just the high level information with you and then hearing from council about your interests in any particular budget parameters or guidelines or expectations of what you're hoping we're going to bring back to you in the form of a proposed budget at the next meeting. City staff will be working on preparing. They've already started preparing their basic budget before any alterations are made, just to get current year services into the future year's cost structure so we can see what it'll take to maintain our current service level to the public. And then we'll start from there to make any adjustments based on the amount of resources that we have. And then for Councilor Machesek, since your first budget season with us, we definitely want to make sure that if you have any questions about how our fund structure works or how limitations are applied on any particular thing or how we're allowed to utilize funds for different purposes, that we make sure we get all your questions answered. And if you would like any one-on-one time for a little budget 101, I guess, we would be more than willing to sit down with you and do that as well. And for any of the council, if you have real detailed questions or want to get into the into the mechanics of it, we're happy to help you. So with that, I'll just turn it back to Linda, and we can start talking about the very high level categories that are the biggest drivers for our budgeting decisions.
Thank you, Annette.
Okay, so as I said earlier, the biggest driver, what, you know, the biggest drivers are personnel, property taxes, or the you know, the biggest decision-making points. And shared revenues this year, I I added that. That's new on the list just because of the the situation we found ourselves in with the COVID-19 pandemic. And so those revenue sources that are driven or decline or increase or decline based on the economy are are the ones that I'm really watching and just, just to kind of see how things evolve. So, you know, we were shut down, the state was shut down for the whole month of April, and just April stuff is just now starting to roll in as far as local option taxes. And we will not see any shared revenue from the state for that month and the third quarter of our fiscal year, the last quarter of the state's fiscal year until July. So so we'll be monitoring those, keeping an eye on them. Bessie Jo and I have worked to do a forecast for the LOT dollars. Those are highly impacted for us up here, potentially. We still don't know. Well, so we're watching as things start rolling in for April, and then just depends on how the rebound Idaho process goes as to what those might look like for the remainder of the fiscal year. So we're watching those, having discussion with Nathan on his projects and just seeing just how we need to proceed for the remainder of the year. So I think we can get into the rest of the discussion unless you have something to add, Annette. Are you you good with moving on to the personnel discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, Tracy's on here, and she will be leading the discussion for our personnel costs, benefits and salaries or compensation and all things related to personnel. So I'll turn it over to Tracy so she can have that conversation with us.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I thought what I might do, starting out, again, given that we have Tom being, or sorry, Mike being a new council member, just do a little bit of briefing on our current salary structure and and how compensation works within the city and how how we manage that. We, all of the positions within the city are classified into salary bands or ranges based on the the position itself and the complexity of the position and the level of responsibility and some other factors that we use when evaluating positions. Once a position is assigned a grade, it typically stays within that that grade range, and so employees move through their range more in a horizontal level, if you will, until they reach the maximum for the range of their position. And once they reach that maximum, they are not able to be paid anymore per hour until their range changes, if you will, or if the the top end of their range goes up through us essentially adjusting that salary chart, then that employee would be, again, eligible to have some forward movement, if you will, in their hourly rate. At the city, we have made a commitment to do a salary survey or analyze salary data statewide every other year. We do that to ensure that we're competitive in the market, that we're staying in line with what our peers are doing. The data that we receive is, it's a lot of data. We belong to a basically, it's a group. It's called the Northwest Data Exchange, and that group surveys. There are about 40 agencies within the state of Idaho, cities and counties that they request data from every year, and they compile all of that data. When we initially joined that exchange, they actually requested all of our job descriptions so that they could go through and ensure that they were placing our positions in the correct categories in that salary data. So they do not just use the job title, and they actually use the the job description to determine where those positions should be placed. They do include some out-of-state agencies, just as a reference, to see kind of how we are with our neighboring states. So every other year, we get this massive spreadsheet that I weed through and figure out where our positions are. I do quite a bit of analysis on that initial data and just get a sense of where we're sitting overall with our whole compensation chart. I have done some initial analysis on that so far this year, and we are lagging. Right now, overall, we're about 7% behind the market. Now, when I speak to market, that is essentially well, I'll call it the midpoint of our structure. So we have a, you know, a very low end, like a hiring range person with no experience would start at the bottom of the range. By the time they reach approximately the middle of that range, that's kind of what we call the market position. That's somebody, essentially what somebody could expect to make if they left the city and went to work for one of our peers or another municipality or or agency, what they could expect to make working there, being proficient in their current position. So we generally compare market. I also do compare ranges to see how our starting point compares with other agencies, as well as our maximum point compares with other agencies. But typically, in compensation analysis, you generally just look at the market range. And so that being said, there being a 7% lag, that does not mean that we need to give every employee a 7% increase. It probably doesn't even mean that we need to give any employee a 7% increase. That just means that our current salary chart is needs to be updated. It needs to be adjusted. And so by adjusting that chart, again, it it may not mean a salary increase for for any employee. It's just adjusting our numbers to better align to keep us in a in a competitive position. The reason why that's so important to maintain that competitive position, one thing is employee retention, making sure that we're paying our employees fairly for the work that they're performing for us. Another thing that's really important that we've seen specifically in the police department, as well as a few other specific positions, it's really important for recruiting to make sure that we're advertising and that we're compensating employees or prospective employees at a rate that's similar to other agencies so that we're not missing out on employees because our compensation is too low. So that being said, regarding the salaries, I plan to continue doing analysis on that particular data. We may, oftentimes, we find that there might be certain positions or I'll call it industries or career fields that have grown at a faster rate than others. And so we may have very specific positions that might need to be adjusted more so than other positions. That's very common. It happens typically every time we do this that we'll end up with maybe a couple of position reclassifications just to better align those positions and correct those those salaries. As Linda mentioned, in the the uncertain times we're facing as far as our ability to fund these types of increases. You know, Annette and I have talked just briefly about, again, depending on how those numbers come in and depending on funding, you know, this might be a year that we maybe forego the merit increases and dedicate any monies that we have to correcting our market or adjusting adjusting that market. Again, I think that's really critical, just maintaining a good position salary-wise, compensation-wise. It's just honestly so important for us to keep the people that we have here. It's so expensive when we have employee turnover and then challenges recruiting people, so at this point, I'm just focusing on getting through all of that data and figuring out what steps we need to take to adjust our our current salary chart and what that might look like and how that might impact employees. We are also looking at working with Justin and the police department and knowing the challenges that they've had trying to recruit and retain, for that matter, good employees. We are considering separating the police department and creating their own salary schedule that would be separate. Essentially, it would be dedicated to the police department, separate from the citywide employee schedule. It's very common for agencies to do that. I would say probably more than half of agencies have a separate chart for their law enforcement agencies. So that is something else we're we're working on actively, looking at doing. Of course, that would all be presented to you at a at a future budget meeting. As far as benefits go, hopefully you all agree. I think our insurance company is amazing. I think they they do a great job. I'm so happy that that you all chose to join the triple IA when you did. As a best practice for budgeting for benefits, the triple IA does recommend that we budget for trend, which trend is just essentially the call it the overall kind of increase that that employers are seeing or that insurance companies are offering renewal rates generally across the board. Right now, trend is at specifically 6.8%. I do not expect the triple IA increase to be to be that high. But just in case, who knows what happens in the last few months of the year, I will budget a 6% increase for health insurance. I have not heard anything from the dental insurance companies at this time. Historically, we have not had dental insurance increase greater than 3%. That's really a pretty insignificant amount of money, given the the total cost of dental insurance premiums. So I don't worry too much about about what the dental rates come in at. So I will budget 6% increase for health insurance and see where that puts us. One good thing about that is if the triple IA rates end up coming in lower, let's say they come in at 3%, then we do have some money that has been budgeted for, that's been accounted for for health insurance that we could potentially use for salary modifications or those market adjustments I talked about, or and across the board, kind of a market increase or a cost of living increase, however you want to refer to that. And so at this point, I think that's about all the information I really have. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hello?
Tracy, this is Bob.
Oh, hi.
I think, I think we can all hear you in. We may not have any questions, but I'll I'll ask council if they have questions up yet. That was a great presentation, and thank you for taking us through that.
Yes, thanks, Tracy. This is Mike. I don't have any questions at this point in time.
Thank you.
None from Melanie. Thank you.
None from Tom. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I don't have any questions. Good presentation, as always. Definitely interested in the the idea of splitting the the police department off. That's, yeah, an interesting concept for sure, and I think that you continue to do great work to make sure we're trying to take care of everyone.
Thank you, Colby. I appreciate that. With that, I guess I'll turn it back over to Linda.
With that, I guess I'll turn it back over to Linda. Okay, so next topic is property taxes. And that sometimes, people get a little bit confused sometimes about the property tax process. So the city does not levy or have any impact over the rate except for the dollar amount of taxes that we say that we need to provide services to our citizens. The county is responsible for assessing market value or the taxable market value on all of the properties within the city of McCall, residential and commercial. I was hoping to get the amount for residential property taxable value for residential properties in the city and then the commercial values. But right now, the county is very busily trying to get all of the new and assessed market values updated into their system. So that was not a number I could get today, but should be able to have that for you at your next meeting if you're interested. I think it might be kind of interesting to see what that, what our market values are broken out in that way. So June 1st is a big deadline for the county, and so that's why they're a little overwhelmed trying to get it all done. So we should have the total amount of the taxable market values within the city limits available to us by June 1st or shortly thereafter. So, anyway, having said that, I put up on the screen and this, I intended to send this out yesterday, so I apologize, those of you who are not online and can't see my screen. I do have a levy rates sheet up on the screen. I think you all should be able to see it. Let me know if you don't. And what, yes, yes.
Can you just email that to me at some point?
I emailed it this morning about eight.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, you should have it. I apologize, Melanie. I created the email and then didn't send it, which, you know, that's a good plan.
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
And Melanie, you should have, I think you've seen this sheet before. So this is a comparison of the annual levy rate for the past five years for the city and then the annual taxable market value. And so if you just look at the charts that are on this, you can see it's an inverse relationship. So as taxable market values within the city go up, the levy rate conversely then goes down. And so, so even though the city would take a 3%, so if you can see by the chart, in fiscal 19, our total amount levied was $6,14,967. This current year, fiscal 20, our total levy is $6,291,335. And the levy rate actually went down, even though we levied significantly more dollars. So I just think it's important to realize or to have that kind of in your thinking when you're looking at whether or not to take the 3% or any kind of tax increases. It doesn't always equate to a rate increase. So that it's largely driven by the values. So on your, on the agenda, so I guess I should ask if there's any questions on the levy rates and the market valuations and how that all works to get us what we bring in the next year. Okay. Yes?
This is Tom. I just had one question. Did we make any adjustments just because I know, I know we're going to have a significant decrease in revenue right now? And I'm just wondering if we're predicting or projecting any of those adjustments?
Not at this time. So in, back in 2008 and 2007, eight and nine, the timeframe for the, they're calling it the Great Recession, I guess. Property tax collections remained relatively steady, maybe 1 percentage rate down, but there were no issues as far as during that timeframe about property taxes. Now, having said that, you know, this was a complete shutdown. This year is totally unprecedented. I have no idea what property taxes or the collections are going to be. It is one that we will monitor, but generally, you know, people pay their property taxes or they have mortgages that they pay into an escrow account for their property taxes. So I don't anticipate that those will decline. However, you know, this is something that has never happened, at least in all of our lifetimes, and we will be watching to see what impact that is, that, you know, COVID might have on all of our revenues. But this is not one that I'm particularly concerned about at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor Giles, this is Annette. If I could just add on to Linda's explanation. Property taxes are based on, are calculated in arrears, so to speak. So the values that the assessor puts on the tax roll for the calculation of our levy is based on what has happened in the past. And so, if the real estate market starts to decline this year or next year, the effect of that, we won't see for quite a little bit because of the way the timing of the assessments happen and the collections. And so what you might see is that chart on the bottom with the annual taxable market value might flatten instead of continuance growth curve that we've seen. And the result will be that the chart at the top about the annual levy rate will start to flatten as well or maybe come up a tiny bit. But as Linda was saying, most, because the tax levy is in the first position on a property, usually the banks and the folks holding the mortgages will keep those paid even if they're not receiving the payment from the actual homeowner because they want to preserve their position in terms of that asset and that loan. So this tends to be one of the least volatile revenue streams that a municipality has. So hopefully that helps. The sales, yeah, the sales tax and income tax are the ones that are much more volatile.
Thanks for explaining that, Annette. That helps a lot.
Yeah, and so, thanks for that, Annette. On the chart that I have visible here, you'll see on the chart at the very top, the numbers have the fiscal year 16 through 20, and then the year on the, just to the right of that is the actual tax year. And what that means is taxes, the value, marketable, like Annette was saying, the market value is for the previous year, which we then collect in the next fiscal year. So 2019, 2020 values will be taxed and those monies will be received by us in our fiscal year 21. And I might add also, at this point in time, that generally speaking, building-related fees are also driven by the economy. Back on the, when we had the Great Recession in 2008, 2007, our building revenues were greatly impacted. That was related to the housing bubble and the bursting of that and just the, so those declined significantly. However, what we're seeing, even within the city of McCall and AIC is also, and the state has commented that our building-related, building industry is relatively stable at this point in time. Building permits are still being pulled. I've not seen any decline even during the month that we were shut down. So people are coming in, developers are pulling building permits. On the water side, we had 63 new utility counts that we have set up for fiscal 20. So those would be brand-new water system connections, brand-new homes, condos or townhomes that are now being built and sold, which is 45 more than fiscal 19. So we're in a period of growth even now. 127 utility counts have been transferred. So what that means is houses and homes have been sold within the city. And so now we have new owners. And so the housing industry seems to be going strong here in McCall. So those are not, those revenue sources are not one that we're, that I am particularly concerned about at this point in time. Now, you know, the effects of COVID, they're short-term and then there's the long-term. So we will continue to monitor all of our revenues. But as new properties come online, that then increases our taxable market value within the city limits. So, so based on what we've levied in the last three years, and so the city, you are allowed to take up to a maximum of a 3% tax increase. And so that is calculated on the highest tax levy of the last three years. And if you can see by this chart, that would be this current fiscal year, fiscal 20. And 3% of our fiscal 20 tax levy is $189,631. It's totally up to the council's discretion. You can take the entire 3%, you can take 1%, 2%, or you could take $0. Just, so you can take any amount up to that 3%. We also have available, the city does, to levy to help defray the cost of providing services, a forgone amount of $401,433. Now, the council has not chosen to take any of those forgone amounts. And what forgone is, it's any taxes that the city had available to levy in any given year that they did not. So if you don't take any 3% or you don't, then that rolls into what's called forgone, and you do have the ability to levy that in future years if we need the funds. The state legislature has been really looking at forgone amounts. There've been a number of conversations at the state level, some house, some bills that have been put forth that, you know, AIC has been saying for a long time that forgones, you know, if the cities don't take their forgones, the state might decide that maybe we don't need the forgone at all. And so I know this year, there was some discussion on the forgone and even the new construction and changing how cities can either take or accrue forgone. And one thing that they, the state legislature did this year is if you, say, during the budget process, you make a decision to not take any increases in this year's budget. In prior years, it would just automatically roll into forgone. However, the state legislature passed a bill that becomes effective July 2020 that if you don't take any increases, you have to hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution of intent to accrue forgone. So that would be another step in the budget adoption process that we would need to do if we want to accrue any forgone. So, so if you don't take the $189,000, if we don't do a resolution, then we don't incur an additional forgone amount. And it's then forfeit forever. So we, there's no recourse to go back and get those forgone, forgone dollars. Any questions on that?
This is Bob, just a comment. It seems like, so we've been briefed about personnel benefit increases, for example, 6% and 3% for dental and other items that we see, just CPI, you might call it, annual inflation. So there seems to be some wisdom in the past few years of asking staff, city staff, to at least show us an option of what the budget would look like with the 3% increase so that we don't keep adding on to the forgone, which you have described really well, could be a risky thing from the state legislature's perspective. How's the rest of the council think about that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. That sounds good to take a look at each option.
Okay. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay. So another bill that was passed this last legislative session has to do with the homeowner's exemption. And so all of us who live here, we enjoy a tax break on our, actually, basically, it's a decrease in the taxable value. So residents get a homeowner's exemption, if you will. And currently, it's not changed in the last few years. It still sits at $100,000, which is, well, actually, the current, the total language is 50% of the total value of a home or a maximum of $100,000. So that's the current homeowner's exemption. So they've not changed the homeowner's exemption and they've not taken it away or anything. It still exists, but what they did was take away the deadline for applying for homeowner's exemption. So previously, it was if a home, if someone, a homebuyer, a homeowner became eligible for the homeowner's exemption, they had to make application for that exemption by April 15. So the state legislature has done away with the deadline for obtaining or applying for homeowner's exemption. So there is now currently no deadline. Now, what the impact of that is on the city tax levy or the city valuations is hard to quantify and pretty much unknown what that impact may be. So after we set our budget and someone applies for a homeowner's exemption, we would see some kind of a decrease in our property tax take, but we don't know what that would be. So, and the state legislature, when they passed this bill, they thought that it would be not that much of a hardship or a large impact to cities. And so they went ahead, they made this, they approved and passed this legislation. Just a point of interest, I don't know what that may look like or what kind of impact that is, but just something to be aware of.
Okay, Linda, this is Tom, just a quick question. When was the last time that homeowner's exemption was adjusted in any way?
Oh, goodness. That's the one question I did not anticipate. I can get the answer for you, but I do not have that to hand. It's been, it's been quite a few years ago, though.
And I guess the reason I would ask that question is because 50% of value has changed significantly in the last three to five years. And, and just, you know, I was wondering if we might need to adjust that in some way to reflect inflation and valuation and all the other stuff that's going on?
Well, that is said at the state level, so that would be something that the state legislature would do. So.
Yeah, I know it's not us at the city. I'm just, I'm just curious for the bigger picture.
Yeah, I can get that answer for you, Tom.
Thank you.
It's, they, they have all the year's history and I have provided it in the past, but I did not get that this year.
That's all right, just curiosity question.
Yeah. Okay, I will bring that to the next meeting for budget. So any questions on any of the information related to property tax? Or, Annette, if you have any follow, any things that you would like to add before I move on to the next topic?
I'm good, but if there's any questions.
I'm good, but if there's any questions.
Think we're good, Linda.
Okay. All right. So this is a new topic of conversation, at least as far as in the budget, going into any kind of detail, which I briefly talked about it earlier, is the shared revenues. So shared revenue is, is a group of revenues that we get from the, from the state. So the state collects the revenues. They have these complicated formulas on how they distribute, distribute those to cities, counties, and any districts, highway districts and for like the highway user dollars. And so I won't go into the formulas because I don't, that, I, yeah. They're very complicated. AIC has a budget manual where they go into the history of all of the, the taxes and the shared revenues and how we got to where we are today. So if you're interested in that kind of a read, AIC's budget manual is online at their, on their website. And you can take a look at it if you have further questions about that. However, so when we're, when we're creating the budget for the shared revenues, I rely on, rely on AIC, the state. They project what their annual revenues are. They're on a different fiscal year than we are. Their year ends June 30. And AIC takes all of the data from the state and they put it all together and come up with their estimates. And usually, they're pretty close. So we use, we just use their expertise when budgeting for the shared revenues. This year, the highway user revenue, now, keep in mind, people weren't driving very much this last March, April, and probably a little bit into, to May, although traffic has increased within the city in the last couple of weeks. So originally, they estimated, AIC estimated that there would be a decline for the remainder of the year for highway user revenues, about 20 to 23%. But they have revised that now to more of a 15, a 15% decline, which for us equates to approximately $23,000. So again, there's still a lot of unknowns with the impacts of the last couple of months. So, you know, that may, it may be more than that, or it might, our revenues might come in a little bit better than what they're estimating. Then, so any questions on highway user revenues? It's, it's a tax on the number of, let's see, the number of gallons. So it's, it's a per gallon tax, if memory serves. So when people drive less, the revenues that are collected are less because they're not using as many gallons of fuel. Any questions on highway user?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, so the next shared revenue is sales tax. And this, so there used, there were two calculations. There was the state shared revenue, sales tax, and then there was the county. So there were two, two formulas and they were a separate calculation effective in July of 2020. The state has combined those formulas into one formula. And there was a lot of discussion. I don't know if you, you should, you'll recall that AIC convened a, a working group to take a look at the sales, shared sales tax to try and see if they could, if the committee, which I was a member of, if we could come up with a formula that would hold cities harmless or be more equitable. And we looked at a number of ways of calculating the shared sales tax. And there were always winners and losers. And, and depending on how you calculated the, the shared, the split of the sales tax, some cities would lose in excess of a million or two, smaller cities would be a smaller amount, but it's, so basically, AIC had no recommendation at that point in time to the legislature on what they might do. So I can't remember the representative's name. I think it's Moyle. But the goal is, what, what they're trying to do is get to a more, a per capita sharing of the sales tax instead of having it based on, there's a, some of the other variables such as property tax or property valuations. So what they did this year, as I said, was they combined it into one formula. And the goal of this reformation is to over time, move to a per capita base, basis for allocation. So AIC estimates for fiscal 21, a 3% decline, which is for the shared revenue. For us, it equates to around, or approximately, $18,000. These are not huge. As far as our budget goes, the shared revenues are not a large percentage of our total budget. But, you know, if you take all the increases and the, all the, well, not increases, if you take all the decreases, aggregate those together, I mean, it could have some real impact to our, to our city budget. So again, monitoring those, trying to identify the short term, and then also come up with something, some way of try, of quantifying the long-term effects of COVID. So any questions on the sales tax sharing? Okay, I, I don't hear any, so I'll move on to the other, excuse me. Then, the last shared revenue that we get from the state is the liquor, liquor revenue. AIC does not estimate the shared revenue. They give us the actuals and what we're, what, what we are shot, what we get for the current fiscal year. And I kind of do some trend analysis to look to see, you know, what, what kind of percentage increase we've been getting. Liquor sales have been increasing, increasing for the past few years, actually. I don't know that it hasn't increased in the last 10 years. So the state legislature did divert 2% per year, I think it began last year or maybe the year before, to help support the magistrate courts. And so 2% of the revenues that are shared with cities are then going to the, the court system. However, you know, so we kind of just plan for a little bit more moderate growth, but as you know, that is a, that's a best practice anyway for budgeting for revenues, is you budget low for revenues and higher on your expenditures. And so liquor revenue has been one of those that has continued to increase over the last few years. I'm not anticipating that that one's going to decrease by any great amount.
So Linda, this is, this is Bob. Are, are you projecting, projecting then that it'll be the same as last year, just to be conservative? Rather than a increase?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking it'll be the, the same as last year with a small increase. Yes, that is what I'm, I'm predicting.
Thank you.
And, you know, as we go through the year, I have these calculations where I take a look at all the shared revenues and property taxes and compare them to collections on a quarterly basis, so that so, so that I can see, are we collecting about the same percent of budget in the current years we have in previous years? And historically, at least within the last 10 years, these revenues have been pretty consistent on our collection rates. So I'm planning on continuing to do the same thing. And that kind of gives us a, a heads up if we're seeing something that we might need to react to and adjust our spending on the other side to ensure that we don't run into trouble at the end of the fiscal year. So I've talked about sales tax within the city of McCall. That's one of our economy-driven revenue streams. Building-related fees is also driven by the economy, but it is relatively stable at this point in time. And everything I've been reading from AIC and at the state level, they expect that to continue. And I think that's all I have on the revenues. Those are the, the largest revenue pieces that we have. So if there's any questions? If there's no questions, we can move on to the next steps for the budget. Oh, wait a minute. I forgot something. We also have excess fund balance. And I thought this meeting would be a good time to talk about the fund balance calculations and our, our fund balance reserve policy. So if you'll remember last year's, okay, how do I get, there we go. So if you remember last year's conversation, we, we, you approved or a revision of the fund balance policy to include a calculation to get us started putting some, away some money for some housing, for affordable housing, should some land, you know, should some land come, become available. And we would then have some funds available to. Did you take the screen, Bessie Jo?
I did. I apologize.
Okay, because, okay. I think I'm still sharing. So do you see the fund balance calculations, council and for the year beginning 10, 1, 2019? And it's got the general fund, streets, public works, library, recreation. Do y'all see that?
No, it looked like a small version of it and then it went away.
Oh, because, okay, now can you see it?
No.
No.
Okay, hold on. How about now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Cool. Okay, so every year at the end of the audit, I go through a calculation to determine what our reserve, our reserves are. And we have two different cash reserve calculations that we have with, that we, that are calculated. One is for budget stabilization. And the way that is arrived at is it's an average of the, it's 15% of the last three-year average of our total budget for all of the governmental funds. The second reserve is the cash flow purposes. So with the governmental funds, our revenue take from property taxes, which is the major source of revenue for all of those funds, we don't, we receive very little property taxes in the months of September, October, and November within once some, and sometimes in December, it depends on the flow of when people pay their taxes. But the, the next real big influx of property taxes is typically in January. So we have a cash flow reserve to help us get through those lean months in the governmental funds. If we, if we, so we have a sufficient cash on hand to pay for the city's expenditures. So there are five classifications of fund balance. One is non-spendable, and those, it includes things like prepaid. So we prepay workers' comp insurance. We sometimes prepay expenditures if towards the end of the year, there's a training that we need to pay for upfront, but it's really not going to happen until sometime in the next fiscal year. Public Works has an inventory. And then there's still a note receivable out there to the golf course. And so that's included in our fund balance, but it's not cash. It's not spendable. Then we have some, then the next classification are restricted funds. And those are restricted outside of the control of the city or even a self-imposed by an ordinance that has been adopted, such as the LOT within the city. And so those are restricted for use and purpose. And so any dollars remaining at the end of the year, they roll into fund balance, but they're not available just to satisfy the, the normal operating costs of the city. And so those are taken. So at the very top of this spreadsheet here is the total ending fund balance at the end of fiscal 19, which then is our beginning balance for fiscal 20. So taking out the non-spendables and the restricted, and then there is an assigned fund balance. So in the, in the, not in the general fund, but in the streets, library, recreation, airport, those levies for those two, those four funds are restricted in that they're levied for those operations. So any remaining fund balance in the streets, a library, recreation, or airport is restricted and assigned, or actually basically an assignment to those funds. So they cannot be taken to, out of those funds and used for just general purpose operations. You can't take streets fund balance and use it for police services or any of the other, you know, they're just, taxes levied for those funds are only to be used within those funds. And so that's how the assigned balances are arrived at, is that these are the remaining tax, well, no, excuse me, I am totally misspeaking. So assigned would be the fund balance reserves. So basically, I just totally messed that up. Let's see. Hold on. So those are the calculated amounts that, for the budget stabilization and the cash flow, which comes out of their fund balance, but their amounts are only used within those funds. And that, so that, that's what makes them assigned, is that's the remaining tax dollars that are levied from, for those funds. So the next category is committed. And these are a self, they're either self-committed, so the, like, in the library fund, the library board has said, we're not going to spend the Nell Tobias monies until we have a new library and we're gonna, they're gonna do a room or, or, you know, something to honor Nell Tobias. And so they've committed those dollars to that purpose. They also have a CD that they've invested and then donations. Those are all committed, but they're a self-imposed commitment by the library board and/or the city. And and we also have funds in this committed category that we've carried forward. So funds that were earned and we expected that we would spend in fiscal 19. They didn't happen. We identified that we weren't going to be able to finish those projects and we needed to carry those dollars forward. So they're also, they're in the current year budget and not available to spend in fiscal 20 as far as in addition to. Does that make sense? So they're already in the budget, and so we can't take them and spend them again. So those are any carryforwards and any appropriated fund balances. Down at the bottom, I have a separate section that's committed, which are any appropriated fund balances that we have appropriated within the budget. And typically, those are for capital kinds of projects, because fund balance are one-time dollars. And in the general fund, all funds in the general fund are, remaining funds in the general fund are unassigned. General fund tax levies are the, funds are the only funds that can be used across all the other funds. So it's just for the general use of the city, not just in the general fund. Okay, so I think I kind of can, might have confused everybody, so I'll stop there and let you ask any questions. So I can hopefully clarify what I was trying to say.
That's good. This is Tom, but I don't have any questions.
Anybody else?
Linda, this is Melanie. I think I'll wait until I look at that email you sent, but the, the overall, like, description makes sense to me, so.
Okay, great. So, then I'll press on and if anybody has any other question, further questions, just please interrupt me. So beginning, so basically, beginning of fiscal 20, we have excess fund balance that we can appropriate to defray the cost of the city are at the very bottom, remaining available appropriation. So there's $1.5 million in the general fund, 319, 320 in streets, 109 in library, recreation only is, has $1,500, but that's recreation only, not including parks. So parks, it's, we always say parks and recreation, but there's no tax levy for parks, so parks is funded with the property tax levy in the general fund. And the airport has 747,000 and streets LOT has 1.5 million. However, we only, so that is definitely going to be used for the downtown core project in the coming year. So, and then I, I did not talk about the reserved housing undercommitted, so that's the new addition to the fund balance reserve policy. And so basically it's 5% of the excess, of the remaining, of the available cash calculated and then taken out of the total. So there is currently 79,150,000, $150 set aside in your fund balance reserve for housing. And that is that calculation. There's also a fund balance policy for, reserve policy for the governmental funds, the enterprise, the enterprise funds, and those are golf and water. They're supposed to be self, self-funding, self-balancing funds, however, council has committed to supporting the golf course, but it's still in our fund balance, in our classification is it is still an, considered an enterprise fund. And so the, the way you get to, so basically in those funds, it's not fund balance, it's excess cash. So in the governmental funds, they're on the balance sheet, it's primarily cash, so we don't record any assets or depreciation or anything like that on the balance sheet for the governmental funds. However, we do that calculate, we do have those on the balance sheet for water and golf. And so in order to find out what they have available to use in future years, it's, it's a simpler calculation. So basically you take their current assets at the end of the fiscal year, less their current liabilities, that gets us their beginning cash and, you know, if they have any non-spendable, so there's invent, there's an inventory calculation for water and same thing applies. They don't have cash flow issues per se, so their, their budgets, they only have the budget stabilization reserve calculation in their fund balance reserve policy. So that's just recognizing the difference in how their assets and liabilities are recorded. So golf ended up with an excess cash balance this year, 70,179, and water is 2 million, which then will be applied to their CIP. So if you recall, when we went through the rate study, there, there was, there were a few projects in the outline years that are going to require us to save up funds or to do debt service to do those projects. So we're, they are currently saving up cash. Oh, and I see a typo, I'll have to fix that on that spreadsheet. Excuse me, but, so we are saving funds to be able to do some of those larger projects in the future. Any questions there? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move on then. So that's the, the budget discussions, at least as far from the, from the staff perspective. So I'll turn it over to the council if you want to have any further discussion or to Annette if you have any, anything you would like to add to what I was saying.
Thank you, Linda, for going over that. I know it's a lot of detailed information to try to communicate via the team's phone call, and I thought you did a great job walking us through that. And so I encourage council, when you have a chance, to look at the actual documents in your email. And if you have any questions, let us know. But one thing I found interesting when we reviewed the financial statements earlier this year at the, at the end of the audit, and then after seeing these fund balance calculations, is that we're in a good shape to address the budget this year and respond to any requests of the council for adjustments. And so if you have any general thoughts on what kind of scenarios you'd like us to bring back, please let us know, because as I said before, we're just getting our base budgets calculated right now. So if you're interested in seeing the budget without the 3% and then a budget with the 3% or whatever will help you in your decision-making for this year, please let us know.
Annette, this is Bob. It seems like we, historically, you know, the last few years, we've been really interested in seeing what the 3% can do for us. And I think some, some of us might want to see that as an option as opposed to, you know, only, the only budget scenario. So if it's not too much work, we would like to see what would happen to the budget without a 3% increase and then what that scenario would look like with the 3% increase.
Okay.
And if, and if that is a lot of, lot of work to do that, then we probably should, should ask each council member for their input right now.
I don't think that's a lot of extra work. I mean, that's part of what you pay us to do is to help prepare options for you to evaluate and make the best decision you can for our community. So I think it's a perfectly reasonable and appropriate request that we provide you with those options. So we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Council, you in agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess the, the only other things, you know, I want to, I mean, obviously we're going into uncertain times, but I still think maintaining that housing funding is extremely important and the transportation one also, which I think we'll also be talking about with the, the lot funds that Melanie was asking. I guess, those are my thoughts. I think that you guys did a great job of laying out the high-level stuff.
Thanks, Colby.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to kind of add a little bit to what Annette was saying as far as, you know, we're in pretty good shape. And I think we're in pretty good shape because of decisions that have been made by the council, previous councils, in that having this reserve fund policy, we've, reserve policy for our fund balance is, has, gives us a little bit more flexibility in, you know, not flexibility, but gives us some security that we can handle, you know, the, some of the economic dips and, and things a little bit easier than if we didn't have these reserve funds and these, this reserve policy. It also availed us the ability to front the purchase of the land at the airport before we got a grant. And so without this fund balance reserve, we would not have been able to have done that. And I think we'd be facing a little bit more dire, future years for budgeting, you know, a little bit more dire circumstance for trying to weather the impacts of COVID, whatever that may be, in the future years.
That's a really good point, Linda, and I think the city has used that tool really wisely. It's a, it is a good tool, we've been very careful about that.
Yes, those funds are available to use, but we always, it is, in the policy, it is that we need to have a plan and how we're going to make, you know, bring those back toward the levels that they need to be. So I think it, it's a, it's a good tool and a good financial policy that has served us well.
And I guess I would just add one more comment. Linda mentioned this at the beginning of her presentation, but we're still working on the capital improvement plan side of the budget. And so that has traditionally been paid for, those projects have been paid for out of the remaining balance of the general fund, that sort of bottom line on that big spreadsheet. And so once we know what all of that need and prioritized projects list, once we know that, then we will also have a better understanding for you at the next meeting about whether or not we can afford those things versus regular operations. So that piece is still to come.
Thanks, Annette.
Yes, thank you. And if, Mayor, if you're, you're inclined, that was a nice segue into the last topic, which is next steps and going forward in the budget process?
That'd be great.
Okay, so I've put up the budget calendar. We're a little behind the gate, where we're, it's gonna, it's a tight timeline for May and June for the staff, but at the council, I've got a meeting, so taking up the next work session, which would, your next work session timeframe, which is from 9:00 to 11:00 on June 19. So hope to have a draft budget and then some CIP information for you at that meeting and then a discussion on what you want to do with the LOT. And I just, so the other thing, maybe this is a question for Annette, but TVD, TVT presented their, their ask at a previous meeting when they did their annual report. So do you feel like you need to, or do you want to visit with TVT again on either their LOT request or their, what they have requested out of the operation budget in the general Do you have thoughts on that, Annette?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking the council.
Well, I am, but typically we invite them to come and present, but I, I noticed when they did their annual report, they were also presenting their requested budget. So I just didn't know if there was a need to have them come back up, if there was any follow-up questions that the council may have for TVT.
Yeah, I think if we're only looking at potentially partially funding their request, perhaps we might need to invite them back, but that would be up to the council. And I would also mention that we typically have also had a presentation by McPaus for their contract that they have with us for the animal control relationship with the police department that's included in the council's budget. And so I would imagine, they did not request any LOT funds this year, they did give me a heads up that they were not going to do that, which was appreciated. However, I think they do plan to ask for a continuation of the annual, animal control portion. So we may need to set aside a little time on one of the meetings for both of those entities to discuss their contracts.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Annette, I think those are good suggestions for both McPaus and Treasure Valley Transit.
Okay. I can invite them to see if they're available to come to the June 19 meeting. Hopefully, they can make it. Uh, TVT has to come up from the valley, or actually, we're doing virtual in June, aren't we?
Yes.
That might be easier to accommodate everybody's schedules that way.
Yeah, I think that'll, that'll work great because as Melanie pointed out, or very wisely pointed out, we had, at a previous meeting, asked Treasure Valley Transit to do some new things for us. And, and it's true, that was before the COVID-19 effects, but we still, I think, need to have that discussion because we've asked them to, to do more for us and we, as a council, will, will put a lot of thought into that and we may have questions for them as we discuss the options for whether fully funding their request or partially funding. So I, I agree with Annette, it'd be good to have Ms. Lundberg on the line with us when we do that discussion.
Okay, I'll make it happen, thank you. So the next meeting for council, so typically we have a three meeting, well, a meeting in May, which we're having now, a meeting in June, which is already scheduled, and then a meeting in July. So your work session timeframe on July 24th, there's already something on the agenda for that or something scheduled, which is a conversation with Michelle and the P&amp;Z. And I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm going off of memory here, Annette, but I don't know how much time that they're going to need, but at your July meeting is when we have to set the tentative budget, which then is the budget that will come before you for potential adoption at your August meeting for the public hearing. So my question to the council is, would you like to have one meeting in July with the work session with Michelle and her group and then have a longer and go longer, go through lunch? We could bring in lunch for you all and we could get it all done in one day? Or do you have some time to schedule a meeting sometime during the week, perhaps Monday on the 27th to get the tentative budget adopted? Or set, rather? So it's at your pleasure.
Linda, before we ask council that, so option one would be, we do the meeting with Michelle's planning and zoning stuff, the joint meeting, 9:00 to 11:00 on a Friday in July, and then in, either have a working lunch or continue on, and it would probably be a couple hours in the afternoon, like maybe 1:00 to 3:00 or 12:00 to 2:00. Is that what you're envisioning as option one?
Yes, I am. Or, okay, so that, it could be from 1:00 to 3:00 or 12:00 to 2:00, whatever the timeline is, but if we get to a point where we don't have a balanced tentative budget, we would either need to go longer or we would need to reconvene on another day. Because the tentative budget is what's going to be in the public hearing notification and I need to have the notices in the paper on August 6th and August 13th for the public hearing for budget. So.
So then option, option two would be, we just do a 9:00 to 11:00 meeting and then come back and do a, the following Monday as an example, do another meeting from 9:00 to noon to make sure we get the tentative budget, the highest number figured out.
Yes.
So let's, with that kind of general description, I'd like to hear from each council member, rather than calling on you, just make sure that each of you weighs in on that. What's your preference?
This is Mike, I'm open to either.
Thank you, Mike.
This is Melanie. My only concern is that time of year gets pretty busy for me. But. But I, I feel like we're just going to have to be flexible.
Thanks, Melanie. Tom?
Yeah, I, I'm open either way. You know, I'd like to see us get it done in one day, if possible.
Me too. I, I'm thinking option one would be best. We should try for that. Colby, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm open to either as well, but partial to one day.
Cool. Let's do one day, try that, Linda and Annette. Let's see what we can get done on a, on a Friday. With the morning stuff with Michelle, and then the afternoon with budget.
Can I put that agenda out for, until four or even five, and then with the goal of getting done earlier?
Sure.
I mean, if we don't, if we don't accomplish it, and we say we're going to quit at 3:00 PM, then we would have to reconvene another day. So I just, on Monday, just to make sure it gets done. So I need to have the public hearing notice to Tom that Monday, that Tuesday, or, yeah, Tuesday at the latest, so.
Yeah, go ahead and notice it is like till 5:00 PM on a Friday, but our, I think you sense that our abilities are limited, so see if you can structure it to try to get us to help you get that business conducted, you know, completed, and do a diligence before five o'clock. We'll probably be fading by four or 30.
I, yeah, I, I realize we'll all be fading by then. I just wanted to, I, only reason I'm pointing that out is if, if we don't accomplish it on Friday, we'll need to convene on Monday. So just kind of want to put that on everyone's radar. However, all the work between now and that meeting will hopefully set us up for success and be able to accomplish it in a shorter period of time. That's the goal.
Yeah, our recent history, you, you've been really great, you and the entire staff helping us. We, we've been pretty successful using that Friday model.
Yep. So I'd like to continue that trend, but there's a lot of work between now and then. So just kind of planning for the worst case, hoping for the best case.
That works for us. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So that's what we'll do, if, if everybody's in agreement. Friday, July 24th, till three, hopefully, and we'll have a tentative budget at the end of that work session. I didn't hear any arguments, so I guess it's a go.
It's a go. You know, all of us that have been through our training with AIC, they really, they talk a lot, awful lot about how important budget development is, and the responsibility of each city council to be fully involved. And you, you and the staff and Annette do a great job of, of helping us redeem our responsibilities there. So, yeah, we're, we're committed to those meetings in June and July.
Okay, and, and I just want to say, if any of you, you know, have any questions, you want to have a one-on-one, you know, Annette and I are both available to have any follow-up discussions that you think you need to just get you to a place where you're ready to adopt a budget. It is one of the bigger decisions that you, you all have to make every year.
Appreciate the offer.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I think I've finished my piece. Have the final budget adopted, so yes, or planned out? The calendar, anyway.
All right. I think we've covered all the items. Guys did a great job, all of you helping us. So I don't have anything further. Annette, any last thoughts from you?
Thank you very much for your time this morning. Really appreciate it. And have a great Memorial Day weekend. And if you have a chance, I know our volunteers from the American Legion are out placing flags at the various cemeteries. And if anyone is interested in participating in that, I'm sure they would love to have more volunteers. So I hope you enjoy the long weekend, and we'll see you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just saying thanks, everybody.
You bet, Mike. Thank you. I think, I think we had a great meeting. All right, we, we will adjourn.
All right, thanks, everyone.